I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mr. Zarzaki, can you please call roll? Here.
Ms. Chick is absent with notice. Mr. Kuznow? Present. Mr. Equinno?
Present.
Ms. Infante? Absent with notice. Ms. Stephens?
Present.
And Mr. Zarzaki, present.
Thank you. Everyone receive copy of the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Mr. Equinno, supported by Mr. Zarzaki. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Kuznow is present. Call to the public, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission? Seeing none, we'll move on. Clarifications from commissioners, is there any? Correspondence, I don't believe there have been any. Thank you, Mary. There's no public hearing tonight. Reports of committees. Ms. Chick being absent will go to ZBA, Ms. Stephens.
Thank you, there is nothing to report.
Thank you. Staff, Ms. Byrne. Planning consultant, Mr. Lippens.
Nothing not on the agenda.
Thank you. Parks and Recs, Mr. Equinno?
Nothing to report, we did not have a meeting in July. Our next meeting is tomorrow, which is open to the public. Anyone that would like to attend is tomorrow evening here at 7:00, downstairs in the Conference Center. Thank you.
Thanks. And in absence of Ms. Infante, Downtown Planning Group, we can wait till next time, when she's present. Item 10, unfinished business. We have further discussion of proposed zoning ordinance amendments on signs. Mr. Lippens, would you care to share with us a brief synopsis? We did talk about it prior, in prior meetings, although our last meeting was some time ago, with Patrick. And we received the completed changes of the ordinance in this last packet, which was dated in the 1st of August. But if you could briefly describe it for the public, and we will look at it. And also, I found that I had some, a lot of items to look at. If we could at least cover the first half tonight, it is 20 pages, a little bit lengthy, a little bit involved. If we could cover the first half, like the first 10 pages, and talk about some of the items there, perhaps we can visit the rest of it at our next meeting. Mr. Lippens?
Thank you very much, yes. This evening, Planning Commission has in receipt memo outlining some proposed changes to the sign regulations, as well as some draft text noting additions or some reorganization of the sign regulations.
Excuse me, Mr. Lippens, is your microphone on? There's a green light.
Thank you.
There you go, thank you.
I will start again.
So the folks at home can hear.
Yes. This evening, we're looking at sign regulations. Planning Commission has in receipt a memo outlining some text modifications, as well as a proposed modifications to the ordinance, which includes some reorganization restructuring of the language for clarity, as well as deleting regulations and inserting new regulations for the purpose of making them more clear and defensible. The reason we're making these changes is in, I believe now, two years ago, the Supreme Court of the US, not the Michigan Supreme Court, had a decision called Reed versus Town of Gilbert, which was consistent with decisions they made in, you know, previous decades, supporting not regulating for speech or content in signs. So essentially, the desire is to have municipalities regulate for aesthetics and that those regulations can change by district, but that they should be defensible and not targeted to specific speeches, speakers. Additionally, the guidance is that special privileges shouldn't be given to commercial speech, that essentially free speech should be regulated in the same way for all residents. This is kind of a brief summary and synopsis, so that Planning Commission understands the general intent behind the regulations we're proposing here, and noting that we're actually aiming to make the ordinance more defensible and clearer, so that they can be easily implemented. The memo we prepared has outlined in it a number of bullets describing each section what we looked at and the general approach we took. Would you like me to, in some detail, go through this bullet list, this evening?
Are you going to go through all the definitions and the whole works, or?
Well, no.
It's your wish, it's pretty lengthy, if you want to just touch on the basic topics, yes.
Thank you, I'll propose that I'll walk through the sections that we modified for the benefit of the public as well, and then take questions on the actual regulations following.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the first section we looked at is Section 36788, which is Purpose. And what we did here was we refined the purpose statement to make sure that we were clearly showing the reason why the township is regulating signs. The second section we modified is Definitions, which is Section 36789. One of the things we did was we're proposing moving sign-related definitions to the sign section of the ordinance, so that they will be more easily accessible. And then we've also added clarity to specific definitions, including graphics and sign types. The next section we looked at was Section 36790, General Sign Regulations. In this section, we added additional provisions to require non-combustible material and proper maintenance. The next section we looked at was Substitution, General, or Section 36791. This section, this is a new section that permits non-commercial copy to be substituted for commercial copy in any lawful sign. Essentially, this is what I mentioned in my description up front, that we can't give special permission to commercial speech, because non-commercial speech is protected. So essentially, what this means is that any sign can also be used for non-commercial purposes, and it's called a substitution section. The next section we looked at was signs permitted in recreational conservation and agricultural districts, Section 36792. And the next several sections actually deal with what types of permitted, signs are permitted in which districts. So they'll deal with the types of signs that are permitted, the size of signs, the placement. And for each of these sections, we've provided in the memo which outlines the recommended changes, some reasoning and justification for each changes in the comment field. So I'll note the agricultural district signs, and Recreation Conservation District signs, Section 36792, which I just mentioned. We've modified signs permitted in the residential districts, Section 36-793. We've modified signs permitted in the business districts, Section 36794. And we've modified signs permitted in the industrial districts, Section 36795. And we've modified signage in conjunction with approved temporary uses in the WLD, LC, GC, ROLI, GI, PSC, RTM, and non-residential PUD districts, noted in Section 36796. Additionally, we've made minor changes to the section covering billboards, Section 36797. We've made minor changes to the section which regulates electronic message signs, Section 36798. We've added to a list of exempt signs in exemptions, Section 36799. And the purpose of these changes were to make them more content neutral. We've made no changes to the permit and fees section, Section 36801. We've added a graphic to support the text in the computation of surface area section, 36-802. For the removal section, which is 36803, we've changed the language slightly to say, "Take no action to force the removal of a sign," instead of the township removing the sign. And we've also clarified the description of what makes up an abandoned sign that becomes an off-premise sign due to a business closing. So those are mostly clarifications. In non-conforming signs, Section 36804, we've made no changes. In responsibilities for signs, Section 36805, we've changed advertiser to sign user. And the same change, changing advertiser to sign user was made in the registry section, which is 36806. And that is a brief summary of the changes that you'll find in the proposed sign regulations text, which is an attachment that follows. Again, to help Planning Commission interpret this document, we have, it is a track change document with the proposed changes in red, and proposed deletions are struck and through. When we felt explanation would be helpful, we've included a justification in the comments section, which will appear in blue in the margin. In the margin, deleted text actually appears in the margin as well. So I misspoke earlier when I said that the deleted text has a strike through, that is actually not true. The deleted text shows in the column, in a box that says deleted. And that is my presentation, and I would happily entertain questions or discussion on the regulations.
Thank you. I do have questions throughout the document, but perhaps we can like, we can tackle the, start with the definitions perhaps, and then see how far we can get with this in a timely fashion. But I don't know how many of the other commissioners, you know, really took a look at this, but I think this is a much more efficient document than we had previously. I do like the completeness of the definitions, and it includes some illustrations, which are helpful probably to potential customers and residents. I think that once we iron out some of my questions or other questions, I think it's going to be a benefit overall. It does look as if grouping them and the zonings and what you can and cannot do is beneficial. So overall, I like the document. But I, again, with doing something like this, I like to be as complete as possible if we're going to go through the whole process and make sure that we have all accurate definitions and anything that may have been existing that may not fit be addressed at this time, and it would make sense. So that's where I'm coming from with my comments tonight. But I guess I can start, and anyone, any of the other commissioners, if you have questions as I'm going, please let me know. But as far as the first grouping of all the definitions, I had no issue all the way through to page four. The first one I had was about, on page four, the item 13, the mural. The last sentence saying the building inspector shall make necessary determination as to whether the design of a mural, is a mural or a sign. I think that leaving it to an inspector should be either the building official or a zoning administrator, just for our purposes. Because ultimately, the zoning administrator is the one that would approve all things anyway, according to what I've read. The next thing I had was on page six. And we're talking about sign definitions in general, abandoned signs, number one. A sign that is no longer regularly maintained. I think it should also include something to the effect that a sign or supporting structure is no longer regularly maintained, because I think we have had issues in the past with enforcement or those type of things, where it may be a, you know, a supporting structure for a sign that's just abandoned and left. Number seven, on the same page. Excuse me, number eight. A decorative display. Says, "A decorative temporary display designed for the entertainment or cultural enrichment of the public and intended to serve as a cosmetic adornment rather than to convey a message. A decorative display should not be considered a sign." I guess there's the, I always look at these things as, how is it going to be enforced? You know, to be realistic. So what is temporary? I mean, temporary to some people, it's subjective for one. Perhaps we could eliminate the word temporary and put at the end, or consider temporary, because it's really a subjective item, and one person's thinking it's temporary, or, you know, it could be a week, could be a month, could be three months. So I think it may lead to an enforcement issue. Some clarification might be needed for number 10 on the same page, grade sign. Average elevation of an area within a radius of the sign base equal to the height of the sign. Perhaps like within the horizontal radius of the sign base, so that there's no question of the radius. Some of these may seem nitpicky, but I mean, I went through, you know, I just want to bring it up, so that if we have a revision on this, they could be addressed. Page seven, we start talking about, it's a continuation, but it's talking about height of the signs and the vertical distance measured from the average grade at the sign location to the highest point of the sign. There's language in here that says average, average grade in number 11, but it doesn't continue with that language in A and B. So A is the height maximum, shall be measured from the average grade. I think being consistent with the language would be helpful. And also in B, so adding average grade. Item 16, on the same page seven, speaks of any structure or part thereof. Should, okay, the last, if you get to the last sentence, well, it's actually all one sentence. You go, okay, I guess I'll read it. Any structure or part thereof, or device attached thereto, or painted, or represented thereon, or any material or thing illuminated or otherwise, which displays or includes any numeral, letter, word, model, banner, emblem, insignia, device, code mark, or other representation used as or in the nature of, an announcement, advertisement, direction, or design of any person, firm, organization, place, commodity, service, business, profession, or industry, which is located upon any land or, I wanted to say attached, on or attached to any building, instead of in any building. If you say in any building, it's really not visible, doesn't apply. And actually, in a building's exempt, I believe. So instead of in, it should be on or attached to any building in such a manner as to attract attention from outside of the premises. On number 17, I had, 17 on page seven, I had a concern regarding the exclusion of the necessary supports or uprights on which a sign is placed. And I think it's reflected later that those, that supports such as those, as long as they don't contain any signage. I think that should be reflected in this paragraph also. So in other words, you could have a smaller sign with quite large supports. If it's a four-by-eight sign with two-by-two columns supporting it, you can, you could sign the columns. So as an enforcement issue, to be consistent, which I think it is picked up upon later in this revision, it should indicate that as long as those columns don't convey any signage.
Got it.
And, okay. Anyone have any comments so far? Yes, Amy? Please stop me.
We were on a roll.
Go ahead, thank you.
You were doing so great.
Up to page seven, anyway.
Yes. Paul, I have a couple of just things that stuck out at me. The first one is on page four. Outdoor advertising sign. A sign intended to advertise a use located on other premises and which is intended primarily for advertising purposes. Does that not imply that you would have to read the sign in order to determine whether or not it was an advertising sign? I'm just wondering if that's not completely content neutral?
I will say, I'll flag this and discuss it with Patrick. There are still some ways to do off-premise regulations, and a lot of it has to do with, let's say, an individual community's desire to regulate that type of signage.
Okay.
So I've done revisions in a number of communities where we have chosen to eliminate this type of definition, but in other communities, we've decided to keep them. So let me check with him on the intent for this particular thing, but I agree or see the reason why you're asking the question. I think it's a logical question. I think if we leave it, we do so intentionally. Does that make sense?
It does, and that also leads into my next, the two definitions of concern on page seven and eight. Sign on-premise commercial and sign off-premise commercial. I know that communities have, you know, had some leeway in regulating on and off-premise commercial signs, but I'm just wondering if that will, you know. Going forward, Reed is two years old. Going forward, what, is this going to get us into trouble too with the on-premise? Again, because you have to read the message to know if it's on-premise versus off-premise, whereas really, what we can control is time, place, and manner of the sign.
Do you have a preference either way?
I would prefer to remove the on-premise, off-premise distinction. I just see it as being problematic for enforcement. But I'd also like to know what the township attorney would say.
May I ask what would be the, what would be the issue enforcement-wise, when it's defined? I would tend to think that the more things are defined, the more easier, the easier it is to enforce. But what is your reason?
Well, so the Reed decision said that communities can regulate essentially the manner of signs, the timing of signs, and the placement of signs, that everything has to be content neutral. And in my mind, if you have to read the text or the logo to know if it's an on-premise commercial sign or if it's an off-premise commercial sign, do you see what I mean? You have to actually read the sign to determine if it's one or the other, versus can, we can regulate that you can have this sign in this location for this duration.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, I see the distinction, and I think my previous comment is, it's relevant. I think that there is, it's a risk tolerance, and it has to do with protections of commercial speech versus protections of non-commercial speech. And I'm sure that Patrick considered that, and let me just circle back with him. I also think your suggestion to consult the township attorney on this issue is a good suggestion, but there is, let's follow back on it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I'll pick up from, anyone else have any comments so far? No? Mr. Kuznow?
I'm still not understanding the grade sign definition there. Seems that they should be able to mention here and all that stuff. Whether it's the average elevation of an area within a radius of the sign base, is it the length of the sign base?
The grade sign? That's the one that I had brought up?
Okay, you brought that up, but I don't understand what you mean by the same. The ground is equal to the height of the sign. The average height of the sign, the average length of the ground is equal to the sign, therefore, the sign's underground, is that understood?
My, before I, Mr. Lippens answers, but I'm reading it as sign grade. It's grade, comma, sign, so it's the height, the elevation, the height of the sign in actuality. So it's the average elevation of that sign area, and that's where it gets a little confusing. Within the radius of the sign base equal to the height of the sign. So I don't know that you would need that much of a specific area elevation as you would a maximum or minimum height. I think maximum height is- I think maximum height is more of the concern, but I mean, if, if you needed to, the average area of the sign with an average elevation, um, within that radius, and I'm, I'm reading it as the radius of the sign base. So in other words, a horizontal radius. But maybe Mr. Lippens can clarify it.
Um, it, it does seem somewhat confusing to me. But I believe that this is the, how you determine the actual grade. To determine the height of the sign, how you determine the base of the sign. So it's, it's, that's what it means when you, you're wondering what this definition means. It's like, we know, how do we determine where the height is? We have to know where the, the base is. And this is how you determine where the base is, where the grade, the sign grade is.
So the grade needs to be defined, do they also consider certain things, somewhere in that? Consider the general radius? So, okay, so the radius is the height, is, is that what it is? The radius is equal to the height of the sign? Is that what I have to believe there? Different things right away.
I, I, well, that's, now that you mention it, I said horizontal ra, that doesn't make sense to be a horizontal radius. It would be a vertical radius, it'd be off the ground.
The saying is, the height of the sign equals the radius horizontally around it.
Well.
That's, that's what it sounds like, that's, if you really think this apart, it doesn't seem like it's trying to say.
That's what I struggled with the whole time, so. Apparently, I would, you know, Mr. Lippens could probably look, we, by the time we, we meet on this, maybe we'll get a little clearer.
The issue is to say the radius is equal to the height of the sign. So.
I think it is the horizontal radius. I think it's, you know, so you've got the height of the sign, right? And that's, you're defining the grade by a horizontal radius or radius around the base of the sign. So.
What is a radius? What radius are you using?
Well.
It is the height, radius around it. Does it, is it a radius of the sign? Just a radius of the sign base?
Oh, yeah, so that's a good point. So if we take the height and the center of the sign, and that's from the base, that's your grade?
Yeah, I, I don't, we have a page to start with. The sign, not the building, that we're having to do with the neighbors. They call it, I think, a building or something.
Well, I have that question coming up in, ahead, so. Ms. Stephens, can you speak so we can?
Well, I, I, I think what, what that definition is getting at is if you go further into the ordinance on page eight, par, uh, paragraph four, sign height, computation of height, it does not refer back cleanly to that definition. So maybe that's the sticking point in enforcing that, or interpreting that definition. Because the way I read the definition is if you are on a slope, or if the grade is not even, then you, if your sign is six feet high, then you take the 12-foot radius. And that's where you measure your average elevation, but then you have to apply that average elevation to, uh, B. Paragraph B under four.
Wouldn't it be a diameter?
Yes, thank you.
So the radius is what I think throws it all off.
Well, I think the radius is from the base of the sign and, and bottom, the top of it, then it was six feet, you draw six degrees around that, so it was the average height and then around.
That would be a diameter though.
Six foot degrees.
Well, yeah, radius, yes, I understand.
But then if you read paragraph four, normal grade shall be construed to be the lower of existing grade prior to construction or the newly established grade after construction, exclusive of any filling, berm, and mounding. It doesn't really match with the new definition.
So we need a clarification regardless. Maybe we can plow on and get through page 10. Okay.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. So I was on page eight. Um, Paul, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Picking up where I left off, um, number 22 on page eight at the top, unsafe sign. Probably again reflect the building official or quote enforcement officer would be more realistic to what Northfield Township has in that paragraph. Um, be, it, it may not always be a building inspector. Um, a lot of times it's an ordinance officer who's not a building inspector, so just wanted to clarify that. Then we get into one of my favorites here, which was existing language. And you did, really McKenna did minimal changes in this, but it's from our existing ordinance and it's, it's really a mess, I thi, I think. And I'll start by, this is, uh, our, the section 36, 790, general sign regulations. So we're talking about, um, the following, general sign regulations apply to all zoning districts within the township. Number one is obvious, that's okay. Number two, we get into sign character and setbacks. So you have like a whole big first long paragraph describing about character of a sign, which again, it, it's a subjective thing. It's talking, all signs shall be designed, constructed, maintained so as to be appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of their vicinity, so as not to change the essential character of the area. Who, who is gonna make that determination, for one? I think it's, it's kind of unrealistic. Uh, some people may say any sign change, changes a characteristic of anything. And I understand that we're trying to have, uh, some form of consistency, but, um, I think the whole first sentence needs to go, and, and really number two should talk about the setbacks. Um, all ground signs shall maintain a 15-foot setback, a minimum setback of 15 feet from all road right-of-way, and shall be located no closer than 15 feet from the edge of the principal entrance driveway and all property lines. And I see the 15 feet from a driveway because you get into a clearance issue with driving in and out. Property lines, it's, it's pretty consistent, I'm sure, with many other, uh, places that have sign ordinances. But, um, really I think number two should, should deal with more of the setback than anything else. And especially in, uh, in the downtown area, it's pretty much, if someone were to wanna erect a new sign, they're almost automatically gonna have a, an appeal to get from the ZBA with the 15 feet from the property line. Um, so maybe, uh, there could be some, um, some look at how we would address possible downtown area with that kind of requirement that could be, uh, added into there, Paul? Just a thought.
That, I think that, that's for ground signs though.
Well, what if we have something, what if there's, uh, future development in town, which are limited lots, close setbacks? Am I incorrect?
I don't know, I'm just thinking that you could have a wall sign in downtown that this might not apply to, that could be on the property line.
Possibly. But I mean, the, the options there, I mean, I see what you're saying. There could be other ways to go. But what's your thought on the character part of the whole paragraph?
Um, you know, I think your, your question about who determines that is a good question. Um, you know, if it's, uh, something we review in site plan process, we could look at it then. Um, but, uh, the, I guess my only comment on it is that aesthetics is something that the township can, can regulate. And, uh, you know, since this is an existing regulation, um, it's, it's not doing any, any harm um, by not changing it. And if we eliminate it entirely without replacing it, um, we're potentially limiting the, the ability to actually re, review signs for character in, in some manner.
Do you think that there could be a, could be better language to do that than what we have? That's, that's what I'm asking. That's fine if you think it should remain in order to, to get to, to the end product for a sign, but I think it should definitely be looked at for better wording.
Some time, yeah, I'll, I'll discuss that with, with Patrick as well.
Okay, I mean, I'd like to address it as a whole. I don't wanna leave that piece out and just deal with your changes and then have to revisit. I would like to, to do the whole sign ordinance, in other words. Which gets into my next thing, with the, the permit required is really messy on its description, saying that, uh, a, a permit should be obtained from the township zoning administrator. It's really inaccurate for someone on the outside that's not familiar with any of the process. It, it muddies things up. The permits issued through the building at the department, I'm assuming. Am I correct, Mary Bird? Yeah, so I mean, um, that, that paragraph needs to be cleaned up. Number four, I don't know, I think I understand how, where they were going with this original language, but it doesn't work. I see, I can see the sign height is what it's regarding, number four. No free signs, freestanding sign shall exceed a height of 15 foot, 15 feet. Above, I would say above average grade, if that could be added in there. Cause we, we, since we're talking about all these average grades, again. Um, then it gets into computation of height. From the distance, uh, as the distance from the base of the sign at normal grade, maybe average grade to stay consistent there, to, to the top of the highest attached, attached component of the sign. Again, average grade shall be construed to be the lower of, I don't, I guess I don't understand these, the numbers one, two, and then we go into C. It should, it should be, uh, existing grade prior to construction, newly established grade after construction. If it's new construction, they know what the finished grade is going to be. It should be on the site plan. So I don't, I don't understand the, the purpose of, of this whole, uh, few paragraphs in this. John, thank you.
Yeah, I was also concerned with this one. You were using normal grade, which is not a term that is normally used in the construction industry. It's final grade or finished grade. Even average grade, in my opinion, is gonna be confusing. Uh, we're averaging across the, the final grade. It should be average or final grade. You want the final grade for the sign height. They could be putting it up on top of a, a berm or anything else like that. But just to say normal grade, uh, if you go to a, an excavator and say normal to him, he's gonna just give you a quizzical look and say, what do you mean? It should be final or finished grade.
So, um, the, the previous comment about how we measure, you know, or at least define clearly how we measure the sign grade, uh, would lead me to believe that this section should reference the sign grade or just the grade, uh, since we're defining sign grade. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we're, we're using different ter, several different terms for the same purpose right now. I mean, we were using average before, now we're using normal and not saying average. Uh, with it, we should come up with one statement that's uniform throughout the document.
That, that was, uh, thank you, Mr. Zarzaki. That's my, that was my point also. I'm trying, trying to be specific enough for you in this, you know? It's very slow going through all this, but I'd like to have consistent language. This, this whole section is really not consistent with anything. It's, it's as if, um, on a new site that no one knows where a finished grade is gonna be, which is not the case. I, I just, it doesn't make any sense. I think it's antiquated, doesn't work. Um, really, if, so if, we could look at four, B, and C and, uh, clean it up somehow, I think end result would be much better. And as long as we're, and if it remains, as Mr. Zarzaki said, if we're talking about grades, let's either use, get a definite, you know, use a consistent terminology, average grade, or if we're talking about new construction, it would be finished grade, you know, proposed finished grade, something to that effect. So it's, it's a wordsmith thing. I don't, end result, how we get there, I don't care, but this, this just isn't working.
So, so, um, looking at this and within the context of our last conversation about what the sign grade definition means, I think it's becoming clear to me. I think we can clean it up, but I'll offer an explanation. Um, going back to 10 on page six, sign grade. The average elevation of an area within a radius of the sign base equal to the height of the sign. So what they're saying there, take the whole base of the sign, right? And, you know, if it's, if it's a square, you know, at the base, and take a radius equal to the height of the sign, if it's a 10-foot sign, go around that base with that radius of six feet, if it's a six-foot sign. And that, you get an area, it's, you know, a polygon area. What we're gonna do is average the finished grade within that area, and that is going to be defined as the, the, the sign grade, the grade of the sign.
That's, that's perfect for me if it's stated clearly that way.
So.
That works for me. But that's not what we have.
Right.
We have a, we have a, a document that has a lot of open ends. Uh, it's, it's, there's a lot of question. That's why I'm belaboring everybody going through this, to be honest. I, I don't wanna just pass it along and this is what we have in the poor fellow out in the field that's trying to make heads or tails, or a potential developer, whoever, whoever it may be, to go through this and, and have confusion. I, I, it's, it can be corrected, I think we can do it. Um, so, but I agree with your assessment there. If that's what, if that's what you wanna have applied, then let's have it that way in all these definitions and the application. So wherever we need to clean that up however so, that, I'm good with that. Is there any other comments with that?
Given that explanation though, uh, with, with four, B, and C, um, on page eight, uh, if, rather than saying normal grade there, if we were to say sign grade, would that make sense?
Yes.
And then I, I clean up what sign grade means and where we've closed the loop on this question.
Um, then you may wanna look at page seven, number 11 also then. You wanna put sign grade there, uh, average grade, that, that's one of the points I brought up earlier.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Sign height, so then we're, we're gonna say sign grade. In those, in A and B. And 11 straight up. Does that make sense or not?
It does, to me.
I mean, to me, average grade makes more sense in that application, but I, I mean, it just may be me. Mr. Kuzno?
Well, we just ran out of the extra two, the sign height definitions, and everything. Number seven. Number, you said, right?
Yes.
Seven, and it says sign right on the bottom. Number four, they did. You think it's a sign, it was a general sign regulations, right?
Yeah, one's, yeah, one's a definition and one's a regulation, yes.
So, you have interpretation and everything, or?
Well, Mr. Lippens?
I think it's okay to have it in two places because one's a definition and one is, is a regulation.
Okay, are you ready, are you ready, Paul?
Yes, indeed, I'm with you.
I wanna make sure. Um, and then, so number five, material, and this was a change or something new. All signs must be constructed with. All signs must be constructed with non-combustible material. Can we, can we be more specific about that? I mean, it's, it's really unrealistic. The complete sign's not going to be non-combustible. Although, are we looking at, do you want masonry? Are we looking to get masonry signs? Are we looking for a certain type of construction on bases, foundations aesthetically? What are we trying to accomplish? Is that what it's after? Or is it something else? I guess it may have come from, you know, just plugging this change from, you know, I don't know how, how it came about, but I guess I have a question with that. Non-combustible.
I, I would say it goes to, you know, quality of materials, durability. So...
I think, I think you're looking at, I think I understand, but it's not what I'm reading, it's not what I'm getting from reading the text. Is there any other commissioners? Mr. Kuzno?
No, thank you again. There's plenty of sandblasted wood signs that are out there, some of which have doghouse or they're going to tear up their road as that. You take away a lot of artistic, you know, elements that are used. And if it fails or happens, well, you have to, I mean, it's not, it's not a plus to say you can't use cedar for your sign. If it's basically done, then it's going to, you would want to say, no, then you're just going to see not the wood.
Thank you. Mr. Zarzaki?
I agree. I mean, there's a lot of signs, like you said, that are, you know, currently in the area that are wood. You know, you're, you're putting this in the general category and we have banners that are not going to be non-combustible. We're going to have all kinds of other types of materials out there to assume that they're all going to be made out of non-combustible material. It's not realistic. We may want to put something in there about structures holding independent signs being non-combustible or, or something, but we do, right after it, number five, number six, have maintenance, which is maintaining these signs, so. It's hard to say what we should really, like you said, regulate materials directly and just say everything has to be non-combustible because there's just too many different kinds of signs that are not capable of being non-combustible.
Thank you. Mr. Iquinto?
Yes, because again, we are a rural, a rural community. And, I mean, reading this, reading a lot of the other changes that you're implementing, I think they're more geared toward a non-rural community. That's my sense in reading it, especially with, you know, that statement in there of non-combustible material. Because again, our character and our flavor of this community is of the type of signs that have been mentioned already by the other gentleman. And so, we have to keep in mind our type of community. I think that's very important so we don't lose our character of who we are.
Thank you. So, we can do something with that. Mr. Lippens?
So noted.
Thank you. Maintenance, the next section, I think there's a lot of unnecessary language in there. I think we could simply say all portions of signs and sign structures shall undergo maintenance as needed to keep them in good repair and working order to prevent corrosion or dilapidation, whatever you want to say. It says to present a neat orderly appearance and paint it as often as necessary. It's all unnecessary. I think if we just get a plainer maintenance statement, make it clear, concise, it's done. No one, you know, again, getting into subjective things, it's just not a good thing. Any other comments on page eight? Other commissioner, Mr. Zarzaki?
Yeah, I agree. We don't need to tell them that they have to paint the material. We're looking more, I think, to have the neat and orderly appearance. A galvanized material which has a 28-year lifespan. If you coat it with an epoxy and a urethane topcoat, as most transmission towers are done, the Galvanizing Institute will give you 100-year warranty on that. But I can tell you that after about 30 or 40 years, they don't look like they've been galvanized anymore and the coatings are in very poor condition. I think we're looking more for appearance than telling them how to maintain different materials. So, I agree that last sentence in number six should just be struck out.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll go on to page nine. I think after this page, we'll, we'll wrap it up on this item until we get, you know, a redraft on this. Speaking, it's regarding illumination from page seven, the bottom of page seven. So, you have three, three paragraphs regarding illumination. In looking at it, I think it's, the, all the wording, the wording in each of them is, is again unrealistic. Although you, you do have to have some sort of, some, some court, some kind of guideline to go far, go as far as light intensity, brightness. I think just the way it's, it's, those three are poorly worded. And I'm going to wrap up with my comments. I'm just going to continue. If someone else wants to speak about the illumination, please do. But the substitution, can we make this paragraph, which is 36 dash 791, can we make this more easily understood in layman terms? In other words, it's, I, I had to read it three times just to make sure I'm understanding it right. And I'm, you know, I, I think something simpler, if, if we could evolve to something simpler would be an improvement. So, any other commissioners have any questions or comments regarding illumination or the substitution clause? Mr. Iquinto?
You know, again, these first nine pages, when you speak of the terminology you're using, you know, I don't want to say we're a simple community because we're not, but we are a rural community. And that is our flavor, our characteristic. And making things too complex to, for people to understand just makes it more difficult to enforce and for, it, it pushes people away from wanting to come into the community because a developer, business owner is going to read this and go, I can't understand it. Why do I want to come into this community? If I can't understand what the ordinances are, I'm just going to go someplace else. And so, I think we're complicating things way too much for the businesses that are here. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Iquinto. And again, if, if, Paul, if, Mr. Lippens, if there's questions, you know, by the next meeting, I can email you or vice versa. Had some questions or comments regarding some of these definitions. But I'd like to end this tonight and pick it up at the next meeting with the remainder and if we can move on, on the agenda. Is there any others commissioners that have any comments on the signs tonight? Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to. Thanks everyone for bearing with us on this. Okay, we have new business. Item A, I would like to introduce the new township manager, Mr. Stephen Ains. Mr. Ains, if you'd like to come up and address the commission in public. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. If there's any time that I can be of assistance, sitting here and proofing this document.
Mr. Ains, is the microphone turned on?
Thank you. They had to show me that during the interview also. But I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. And if at any time I can be assistance to the planning commission, either individually or as a group, please feel free to contact me. And if I didn't give cards to everybody, please check with me. I'll give you others out too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ains. Mr. Iquinto?
Again, welcome to the community. I guess I just have one question. What attracted you to Northfield Township to apply for the positions here?
Well, first off, I was looking for a community that had solid values. That, you know, was looking at getting a manager that had moral beliefs. And I was very impressed by the town board when they had the meetings start with the prayer and then with the pledge of allegiance. And you don't always find that in communities anymore. Also, I was looking for a community which was looking for a manager who could come and, and be here long-term. As I told the board, I'm not here as a stepping stone to something else. And also, I wanted a community that would appreciate the fact that with 40 years of experience in the profession, that I have a lot to offer you, but you have a better knowledge of the local community than I do. And so, working together as a team, I think we can accomplish quite a bit. And it is a beautiful community. Although you've got a few little areas that need some attention and that's why they need somebody. You know, you have a lot to offer. And I guess that's kind of the main points I would get at. But there's a whole lot of things and I feel welcomed by the community.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Ains, for staying and appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we'll move to item B, discussion on the North Village developer solicitation process. Mr. Lippens?
Yes, we included in the packet this evening for informational purposes, a description of a proposed work plan to assist the township with the developing of an request for qualifications or a request for proposal to solicit developers for the North Village site, consistent with the North Village area plan that was presented this spring and developed by the Downtown Planning Group. The work plan includes several tasks. The first being the developing, developing a request and supporting materials to include with the request so that potential respondents would have the information that's been collected and due diligence work that's been developed by the township to consider in making a response. The second phase of that work would be accepting and evaluating the response process, including outreach to the respondents as well as preparing reviews and recommendations to plan and commission the board and, and other agencies, likely the DDA and Downtown Planning Group. The third phase would be actually working with any respondents on supporting the development from the township's side and evaluating the development as it went through. And then the fourth would be ongoing responsibilities for managing project development. The schedule proposed would be likely for steps one and two, which is really the immediate task, which is developing and releasing an RFP and then, or RFQ and RFP, and then evaluating that solicitation process to select a developer. We anticipate taking roughly three to four months. And then steps three and four, which is the managing, the acquisition and managing the project would take an additional six to eight months. And then, of course, whatever time it took to actually complete the development. So, we presented this to, to Planning Commission tonight, seeking comment and hopefully support from the Planning Commission to enter the process and really for comment and feedback prior to presenting this information to the Township Board.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. Mr. Iquinto?
So, was I hearing it correctly and understanding that you were saying this whole process would take about eight months?
The first two phases, we said three to four, and then the second two phases is six to eight. So, really, we're looking at nine months to a year.
Okay.
From start to finish.
Okay.
And it's an estimate. I mean, it could go faster or slower.
Anything else, Mr. Iquinto?
No, sir, thank you.
Any, any other commissioners, comments, questions? Mr. Kuzno?
Advisory. We would be looking for Planning Commission to comment on the proposals received. If we follow an RFQ process or an RFP process, it might be slightly different. In an RFQ process, you would be evaluating, we'd present and ask you to evaluate the qualifications we received. If it were staged RFQ following by an RFP process, you might first evaluate the qualifications and then the RFP. Or if we proceed right to an RFP, you'd, you'd make a recommendation on the proposal. But ultimately, you, we imagine you'd be making a recommendation or endorsement to the board.
As the board, you guys have options for the process. That's the board decision, obviously, correct?
I think that you could make a recommendation on that too. We have not discussed this at all with the board yet. Although, I have discussed it with the supervisor and the township manager. But we, what we did here is we laid out that it's, it's not as clear as let's just release an RFP. There's advantages and strategies to each one. But yes, the board, I think, would make a decision on which one of these processes best fit their objectives.
I have, just a clarification, more for the public also. Could you go through the, you know, the difference, some detail about the RFI, RFQ, RFP, Paul, please? Brief description, so.
An RFI is basically request for, for interest. And so, if we were to do RF, 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 request for information, RFI, RFQ, RFP, first we would ask for information about who was interested in responding, followed by specific qualifications from people we selected to get more qualifications. And then the proposal would be a full-blown proposal on what we, whether or not someone intended to develop the whole site. Of course, we could accept proposals for, for part of the site too, so someone could respond with just a phased approach. An RFQ, RF, RFP would skip right to qualifications. And then, based on qualifications, we could solicit proposals from one or several respondents. In an RFP process, we would go directly just to asking for full-blown proposals. And then, really, we wouldn't evaluate who was providing the proposal as much as the content, what, what they thought would, would best fit the sites from the information we provided. The pre-qualified developer process is, is a little bit interesting too. It's, you know, related to the RFQ, but we would actually seek a specific developers, evaluate their qualifications. And then, we could use them not just for this site, but we could use them for multiple sites. but we could use them for multiple sites. So, essentially, it's a pre-qualification process to develop ongoing partnerships with Soul Source Developer Process is similar to that. And then, the final RFQ negotiation process is also an interesting option where we would do a request for qualifications and then, just enter a negotiation with the developer we want about what they could provide for the site. I think in, in the memo, I recommended either the RFQ negotiation process or an RFP or RFQ and RFP. They seem to best fit the scenario based on, based on my understanding of what the Township wants to do.
Thank you. So, so tonight, you're looking for a more or less a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Trustees, correct?
I believe so. Discussion and recommendation, yes.
Okay. What's the wishes of the Commission? Do we need, perhaps, oh, yes, Mr. Equinell?
I was just going to share with the rest of the Commissioners that I, I like the process. I believe it's thought out and there have been a lot of opportunity meetings for people to be involved in the process thus far, and here is thus another one. So, I think it's very beneficial when you can get many of the groups in the community involved, and that has been happening. So, I think, again, it's, it's a good step to write, to find the proper development for that area.
I agree. That's basically my consensus. Mr. Zarzaki?
The proposed work plan is excellent, in my view. You know, having dealt with developers and contractors for over 45 years myself, this is exactly what we would want to see presented and implemented for what we're looking for. I don't see anything that stands out that was missing. It is a complicated process when you're dealing with developers and getting them involved. And I liked the item that you did put in there about the blind presentations. That's excellent. I would have recommended that myself, otherwise, because they, many developers do have excellent salespeople that can, you know, the snake oil salesman, almost, to say, unfortunately. But I like the blind process. It's, it's much more independent and will give us much more idea of what is really going to happen. But like I said, I fully support this.
Thank you. Miss Steffens?
I like the idea of doing the RF, which one was it? RFQ, RFP process, more so than the number four. My concern with the work plan is that some of it seems, and because you, you are putting forth McKenna's qualifications yourself, I'd like a little more meat on this as to how, how we are getting some, a unique service from McKenna on this project. What, what does some of these things look like? And I know that it may be too early for you to flesh that out, but I'm a little concerned that this could apply to any project in any community. How does it apply to Northville Township and this project itself? Just something that, that makes it a little more germane to us and to what we're, we're trying to get done. That's just some of the detail that I would like to see.
Mr. Kuzno?
So, we are supposed to be offering suggestions for which process and achievements we are applying our, the version, the, 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 that we're asking now, for the designated subject, as presented to us and say, that's not the Board.
I'll ask Mr. Lippens the same.
I think it's the latter. I mean, this is a work plan. So, what we're seeking is authorization to work on, on the process.
So, I mean, was there inclusive design concept that came out of the process? Has it been, is it going to be part and commercial or, or is this still this part?
The, the process created a, a plan for the North Village area, which included a synthesis plan, which is the recommended plan for the site. The intent of that process was actually to take that information and, and all of the outreach and work that was done to create it by the Downtown Planning Group and, and participants, and actually provide that to a developer through a solicitation project, process to, to see what came back. Yep.
So, we need to, we need to have a very general, very specific sense of what we want to do there. I want to say, here, here's what we need to have to see, what we do, correct? And this is a sale, this will be sale property to, to your building, correct?
That is the managing of the, the deal part of, of the process. So, I, I don't think we're locked into a wholesale sale of the site. I would say that the, the synthesis plan retains a number, you know, the majority of the site for public use, whether that's done through a, a purchase of the site and some kind of public easements, or it's done through a PUD where there's easements attached for the public use, or if there's actually a splitting of lots, so that there's a part that's retained by the, the Township. That is not specified, and I think it would be a part of a development agreement and, of course, the legal, legal documentation for the site as it moves forward.
And I'm actually, I'm anticipating sort of that's a big enough that this project or this, would be, would I say, you're going to do this property or do something with it, or are you actually, do you have, or any?
I, I mean, I think so. I mean, that's part of the proposal. The extent to which the developing of any portion of that property returns investment to the Township for the, you know, through two things, you know, one, financial return, but two, the use of the space through public amenities is another type of return. And I think both of those returns would be evaluated based on proposals that were received.
All good questions and comments. So, basically, we're looking to forward this to the Board of Trustees, correct? Do I hear a motion from someone?
I move to forward the North Village Development Solicitation Process to the Township Board for their evaluation.
Support, oh, support by Mr. Kuzno. Okay, so we have a motion to forward this to, onto the Board of Trustees, supported by Mr. Kuzno. Any questions on the motion? Comments? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Equinell?
Yes.
Miss Steffens?
No.
Zarzaki, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes from July 19th. Everyone receive those minutes? Make a motion to approve and dispense with reading. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Zarzaki. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Move on to final call to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the Planning Commission? Seeing none, comments from Commissioners? Mr. Equinell?
None, thank you. Just everyone enjoy the upcoming holiday and enjoy the lake and the community and be safe.
Thank you. Mr. Zarzaki?
Just welcoming our new member to our group here. Hopefully, our manager will work his way into our system quickly and efficiently and enjoy his stay here.
Miss Steffens?
Also want to welcome Mr. Ains and say we look forward to see what you can do and get, get going on some of these projects. And also to Mr. Lippens, the sign, the draft of the sign ordinance so far, I think that the definitions are, I mean, there are some, you know, a couple bumps in the road, but certainly make, understanding what the ordinance requires and does, permits, certainly makes it much cleaner, much simpler. And I don't think that anybody who is used to reading sign ordinances is going to be surprised by anything that they see in this. So, so far, so good.
Mr. Kuzno? Thank you. Okay, the next regular meeting is scheduled for September 6th, 2017th. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll support that. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much.